Welcome all to the City of Middletown Planning Board meeting of July 7, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do a little housekeeping first. For our transcriptionists, all members of the board are present except for Mr. Numcheck and Ms. Hewson. We're good, we still have a quorum. And also for our transcriptionists, we have Mr. Welch is present this evening and Mr. Atkins is present this evening. Okay, let's move forward on our agenda. First on the list of our agenda is the approval of June 2, 2021 Planning Board Minutes. I have to start with a motion, I need a motion to amend, there was a slight problem, didn't get out in time, you guys got minutes, but there's an issue with the address 91 to 95 North Street. It has been, you know, properly placed in the minutes as 91-95 North Street. One of your paragraphs is missing that address, so we just wanted to make sure we added it for the record. So I'll need a motion to amend as stated. Mr. Britto, a motion. Second, Mr. Higby. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now for the vote on the... I have to do now, I have to do the minutes as a total now, don't I? Or...
Yes, if that was for the amended.
Okay. So now we need a motion to approve the June 2, 2021 Planning Board Minutes as amended. Mr. Britto, second. Ms. Witt, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Also, this evening for the record, any first-time applicants appearances tonight are considered a preliminary hearing, and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. All right, taking care of our business. First on the agenda, Double R Fish and Chips, 144-146 Dulson Avenue, takeout restaurant. Please step forward, please. Evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening.
Please state your name for the record and what you plan on doing.
Roy Roberts. I plan on opening up a fish and chip spot, um, takeout restaurant, excuse me. Fish and chip takeout restaurant.
Okay. And just to verify, sir, oh, just a moment. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? And we're gonna open the public hearing. And just so everyone knows, just to clarify, your hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And he plans on having two employees. And we have all our paperwork in place. All right. Anyone from the public wishing to address this application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, do we have anyone on the phone? Any written comments? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
We'll go to the board for any questions or comments.
Mr. Welch, any concerns? Mr. Atkins, any concerns?
Back to the public. Anyone here wishing to step forward? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
I'm going to close the public hearing, give the board one more opportunity for questions or comments. There being none, we're going to set up a resolution. Resolve that 144 to 146 Dulson Avenue, Double R Fish and Chips Takeout Restaurant. Hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. with two employees. This will be subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. This applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown. In addition, throughout any of the review process, if the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Please get with the DPW and the Fire Department so you can continue your process.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next on our agenda is Dr. Christian Castro Nunez, 18 Orchard Street. Four additional examination rooms on the first floor and one bedroom apartment on the second floor. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Please state your name for the record and your intent.
Christian Castro Nunez, I'm trying to, um, would like to get approval for the addition of four examination room to our current medical practice at 18 Orchard Street, and have in addition one bedroom apartment on the second level to hold some of our national and international medical doctors that comes to the area in the improvement of recruiting and training new physicians.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Tu, do we have our mailings? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Tu, is anybody on the telephone? Any written comments? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
I don't think so.
Ms. Hanson? Oops.
I don't think there is.
Okay. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on the application? Okay, I'll go to the board, leave the public hearing open, go to the board for any questions or comments.
Can you just reiterate the use of the second floor of the building, please?
Yeah, the second floor, we have a program for training international and national students and recent graduate physicians. They come to the area for a year, so we do provide housing to them, so that would be a great attraction for them to remain in the area.
Thank you.
And this is a general medical practice?
Yeah, this is a primary care practice, and we recently added two specialty, infection disease and neurology, so that's why we're looking approval for this function.
We never got the title report, by the way. Want to make that subject to?
You can, but are you gonna, and this is a question for the public, are, is the second floor gonna be limited to the use of a physician associated with the practice?
I...
That's what the applicant said.
Talking about a student who is possible will be like an intern, I would assume, something like that?
Yes, yes.
And that's what you're gonna limit that use of that apartment to?
Yeah, that's the intention, to provide housing for their training physicians.
Because I'm going to put that in the resolution as such, and that's what the code enforcement will be looking for, an intern, okay? Also, the building inspector and the fire inspector will tell you whether that space in that attic area is sufficient and proper for an apartment.
Okay.
Once, you'll have, this approval will be subject to their inspections to let you know if you can actually use that space the way it should be used.
Correct.
Did I state that correctly, gentlemen? Is there anything you want to add? Be my guest.
Did either one of you look at the space?
Yeah, I went... Sorry, I went out there today and checked it out. I think what we're gonna need is a proper set of plans from an architect, especially for that second floor, to make sure we're gonna meet all the requirements, so.
Is there any issue with egress out of that?
Not if he's doing what he says he's gonna do. That's why we need a set of plans. You know, but, you know, if he puts a permit in and the plans get approved, then he's approved, so, but we just need plans to review.
Okay.
Go back to the public. Anyone present wishing to address the application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone on the line now?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm gonna close the public hearing and go back to the board one more time for questions or comments.
What's on the second floor now?
It's a level, which is quite an open area. Open area about 900 feet square, yeah, and has a height of almost nine, eight and a half feet and three windows.
And sir, doctor, on the first floor, what are you adding? Operating rooms or?
No, four primary care examination rooms.
How many?
Four.
And are those existing areas that you're just making, existing rooms converting to an exam room?
It was an open area as well. It's used by the prior physician, Dr. Totalejo, that retired in 2010, and he used it for the x-ray machine.
That too will also be subject to DPW and Middletown Fire Department review. When they get the plans, they'll be able to, I think, better address those issues, in my opinion. Okay.
So you have to provide plans of the first and second floor?
Okay, so my understanding was for the second floor. Did you also need plans for the first floor? Not getting what the issue is.
Remember we revoked a permit because we, because you didn't go to Planning Board? We let you continue working? You have to get another permit. You have to, you have to, I have to issue another permit on that building.
Yeah, sure, yeah, we did agree on that, I remember.
I know that.
Yeah.
Right.
No, but now we're moving into an architectural plan, which was, that's now, that was not the plan that we had. We had a drawing, a personal drawing.
Submitted all right. I have nothing for the attic, I mean, for the second floor apartment. I'd like to set, I'd like to have a set of plans drawn for that.
Yes, so...
The first floor is fine.
We definitely, okay.
The second floor, I need a set of plans drawn by an architect.
Okay, sure, we can provide that.
Okay? That's it.
But that would be only for the second floor?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anyone else from the board?
So I have two questions. The four parking spaces that are existing, are they existing parking spaces or are you making those parking?
No, they're currently existing parking spaces.
They're currently existing, okay.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned about the x-ray machine, so is there going to be an x-ray machine that you're going to be using?
No, that was removed, yeah.
Okay.
That belongs to the prior physician.
Okay, so you're not planning on doing, you're just planning on doing assessments for patients, is that what you're planning?
Correct, yeah, so it won't be any x-ray, no radiographic studies.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, just so, and Ms. Witt, just so you know, he's in the DMU zone, so in this case, we're gonna end up waiving parking regardless of how many he does have, all right? All right. Anyone, anyone else from the board? We closed the public hearing, or anyone else from the board making a question or comment?
My comment would be, we did not get a title report on this to ensure that there are no easements, restrictions affecting the property.
Right.
So it'd have to be subject to that as well.
And I will do that. I have quite a few subject twos as of right now. Okay.
We have a survey this question with that media requirement?
No. A title report would show, a survey may not, but the title report would show if there are any restrictions affecting parking, the use, so that's why we're requesting it.
Okay, great, thanks.
On the resolution for Dr. Christian Castro Nunez, 18 Orchard Street, for four additional examination rooms on the first floor and one bedroom apartment on the second floor. Hours of operation will be Monday to Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This application, approval of this application is subject to the receipt of a, and review of a title report, the receipt of a set of plans for the second floor, so DPW can review and Middletown Fire Department can review. Also will be subject to the attic space inspection for that apartment. Also, we'll also have a situation that this will be for an intern, that apartment will be for an intern only, okay? And of course, we will waive parking because you are in the DMU area. Being also that you're in a DMU area, you'll have to go to the Architectural Review Board. If you plan on doing any facade work or facade changes or any signage you're gonna put on the building or around the building, you must go to the Architectural Review Board to get approval for those, okay?
The only thing I would add is the intern would be an employee of the medical facility that owns the building.
Well, by definition, interns cannot be employee, they are in training, there's...
So an intern of the medical facility that owns the building.
Okay.
But it's impossible in the country to have interns as employee, who would be medical by...
Employed by, not an employee.
There would not be employee.
So are interned by the medical facility that owns the building?
Or an intern is part of the practice.
Whatever way you want to word it.
Okay.
But I think the word employee cannot be used because the graduate medical education does not allow intern to be called employee.
Okay, they have to be an intern for the medical facility that owns the building.
They have, okay, so what about if they have, if we put in there, they have to be associated with the medical facility?
That owns the building.
That owns the building.
That's fine.
Yeah. Now, we cannot call them intern because it could be a second year in training, which is a resident, so it could be a medical...
So do you want a student?
Medical trainer.
A student in training, is that okay, or?
Why don't we call it a medical professional?
A medical professional?
Yeah.
Okay, associated with your practice?
Correct, yes.
Will be the one who is allowed to occupy the apartment?
Yes.
We'll straighten that out when the minutes come around. Okay. But you understand the resolution?
Yeah, I understand, I just don't want that if there are, if we have a student, they are not intern. If we have a second year in training, they are not intern, so I don't want to violate your language in that...
No, we'll put in the language that you need so that you don't have any issues with your practice or the law or employees or whatever you want to call it. We'll make it fit.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is the board okay with that so far? All right, that's basically the resolution. So I would need a motion on that. Mr. Madden, second. Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you so much.
See to DPW and the Middletown Fire Department.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And just so I can muddle that resolution a little bit more, that's our typical subject to the City of Middletown, DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown in the state of New York if applicable. If in addition, throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Now we have a complete resolution. Thank you all for your patience. Next on the agenda is Jason Hussey, 203 to 211 North Street, Takeout Restaurant.
Hi, how you doing?
Good evening. State your name for the record.
My name is Kamal McKenzie.
Okay.
I'm here, I'm behind from my uncle Jason.
Okay.
Yeah, we put in a Jamaican restaurant, my uncle franchise, Pepper's Jerk Chicken. It's a Jamaican restaurant.
You say it was a franchise, sir?
Yes, sir.
And the name of it again, I'm sorry?
Pepper's Jerk Chicken. It's a Jamaican restaurant.
Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? And did we have the mailings for the application before?
We did, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So Ms. Tu already stated she has the mailings, and so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on this application? Ms. Tu, anyone on the telephone? Any written comments? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. We'll leave the public hearing open and move on to the board for questions and comments.
Mr. Welch, any concerns? Mr. Atkins?
So is this just gonna be the one side of this building? The one, the, looking at the front, the left side?
Yes.
Are you primarily takeout?
Yes, sir.
How many seats do you plan?
No seats.
And just so you know, if you were going to have any seats, the Middletown Fire Department would determine your occupancy by the square footage of your building.
Yes, sir. And also...
Mr. Atkins has...
The guy that, to create the sign, said to bring it up that I need to ask about a permit to put the sign up.
Well, to answer your question, sir, you are in what they call the DMU zone. You'll have to go to the Architectural Review Board. These two gentlemen here can help you with that when you go to speak to them about other issues within your facility. The Architectural Review Board determines what your facade will be like and your signage will be.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, Mr. Atkins. Just on your plans, you have seating.
I just gotta say the same thing, 16 it shows.
Yeah, 16 seats, four booths.
Oh, no, we removed the...
So you're not gonna have any seating in there?
Any seating.
It's not a problem, I don't think it's a problem, but you're not gonna have it.
No, no seating because it's a takeout.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the plan should be revised to show no seating?
Yes, sir.
Because it's in DMU zone, waive parking?
Yes. Make the wave parking, yes. Have that, and I have a revised floor plan. Anyone else?
Mr. Atkins, any concerns with fryers or anything?
No, I mean, he's just gonna have to go through the permitting process for commercial cooking hood, fire alarm, all that stuff. I'll give you a piece of paper, Ron.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public hearing's been closed.
Do you know what the hours of operation of the other tenants are in the building? Because I see he's requesting to 2:30 a.m. And I'm just wondering if they're similar time, or is that, are you looking for 10:30 in the morning till 2:30 in the morning, your hours?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And every day, including Sunday?
It closed, the store next door closes at 12.
12, okay.
And the store across the street stays open till 2.
The...
Kennedy.
The Kennedy Fried Chicken is open till 2 a.m.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay. On the resolution for Jason Hussey, 203 to 211 North Street, takeout restaurant only, possible franchise. This will be subject to a set of revised plans without your seating. We're gonna waive parking. Your hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 a.m., and possibly And since you're in the DMU zone, you'll have to go to the Architectural Review Board for any facade work and/or any signage work you're gonna do on your building.
Okay, and I'll get the information?
Those gentlemen will gladly share that information with you, yes.
Okay, thank you, boss, thank you.
No problem. And also, subject to the City of Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown in the state of New York if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or an engineer licensed in the state of New York. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Get with the DPW and the Middletown Fire Department, please.
Thank you, bud.
Okay, next on our agenda, I apologize if I pronounced this incorrectly. Asmit Alzaman, 292 North Street Grocery Deli. Please state your name for the record and your intentions.
Asmit Alzaman. I own a deli and grocery store.
Okay. All right, and just to verify, your hours are Monday through Friday, 7 a.m. to 11 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 7 a.m., and I'm guessing, is that 10 p.m.?
Correct.
All right, thank you very much, sir. We're gonna open the public hearing. Anyone present?
Do so. Martina, you have the mailings?
Yeah, I happened to see it, sorry. For the record, Martina has the written, the mailings. Open the public hearing. Anyone here from the, that wishes to address the application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, anyone on the line, telephone? Any written comments? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go to the board. Any questions or comments? All right, that being said, we'll go back to the public hearing one more time. Anyone present? Ms. Hanson, has anyone come online?
Not at this time.
Okay. Back to the board one more time.
I mean, we need clear plans, some of these are just difficult to read. Or if you guys are good, then we're good. Say again?
It's kind of, they're already open.
Yes.
And our two inspectors have already seen the property.
Okay.
And they're in compliance, it's just that he needed to come to us, make it official. Am I incorrect in that comment?
Yes, and let me just say that he wasn't aware of Middletown's procedures, and he brought everything into code, into uniform, very quickly, and he was a pleasure to work with.
Parking is waived?
Yeah, we'll have to waive parking in the final resolution, yes. So we're good with the plans, then, we're all right the way they are. And I close the public hearing. Got our comments. On the resolution for 292 North Street Grocery Deli, hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 7 a.m. to 11 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 7 a.m. to 10 p.m. We're going to have to waive parking. This approval is also subject to the City of Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown in the state of New York if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to be required with bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, second. Ms. Witt? Ms. Witt? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Please get with it, while I think you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you very much, sir. Next on the agenda, 8 to 10 East Main Street Residential Apartments. And just a little background. We have a public hearing that is already open. And this gentleman had to meet with our DPW and Middletown Fire Department to work out fire egress methods. And from what I understand, the plans have been revised and been reviewed. And basically, our inspectors are okay with it.
Good evening. Yep, exactly, that's what I just mentioned.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to catch the board up that you're back again.
Appreciate it.
It's fine. I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Mr. Atkins, you reviewed?
Yeah, so I did a site visit. We came up with a good solution. And there, he put them on the plans, and I think we're gonna be okay.
There's another item I want to mention. The first, A2, the first page, we amended. The owner wanted me to show, because there is a group of people is negotiating to rent the space from them. It's about 750 square feet. And also, there's like a tax person wanted to rent the space. If you look at the plan, the lower door, upon entering, you make a right, you know, or you showed a small space there. Maybe 60, 70 square feet. So just one person trying to file tax there. And then them themselves, the supermarket, wanted to have, wanted to establish about a 450, 500 square feet kitchen. So you see a lot of supermarket, they sell like cooked food. So this first floor showed these few items here. So I wanted to know from the board, the tax person and the kitchen, because the tax person is one person, the kitchen is occupied most likely by themselves. Can we just place this on record? Then they don't have to come back to the board again to do this?
I don't, I don't think so, sir.
Okay.
We're addressing your residential apartments.
All right, all right.
And if you have any other changes there, you should... Again, you'll have to draw the plan up. These gentlemen will have to take a look at it. You'll have to come back with a different application.
No problem, no problem.
Okay?
Okay, appreciate it.
So that being said, how many apartments are we adding here? I just want to put that in for the record.
We have three apartments on the second floor and the five apartments on the third floor and the fourth floor.
Three on the second?
Yeah, and the five on the third and fourth.
Five on third and fourth.
Yeah.
That's a total of five between the third and fourth? Or five on three and five on four?
No, total, it's like you enter on the third floor and a portion of the apartment occupy a portion of the fourth floor. So it's combined.
Total, five.
Total, five.
Third and fourth floor. I'm just, I got confused with the floors.
Me too.
It's five total apartments, third and fourth.
And three on the second.
Eight total that they're requesting.
Yeah.
And does that number jive with what you guys have seen on the site? Okay, good. It's fine. Okay. So the public hearing is still open on this application. Martina, Ms. Two, have we had anything come in telephone-wise or written comments since that time? Okay. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
Okay, going to the board. Gentlemen, questions or comments?
I'm looking at the plans here. And I'm gonna defer to Mr. Welch and Mr. Atkins. But I mean, I can't, I mean, there's no fourth floor shown. This is a difficult project for me to say yes to when I don't even see a fourth floor.
The fourth floor, because we only submitted amended three sheets. So the fourth floor, fifth floor, fourth floor, third floor is not changed. So the plan we submit before is still okay.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we need a set of amended plans, gentlemen?
Well, they're gonna have to submit a full set of plans and go through the permitting process. But
Okay.
The only thing that he changed were the items that we talked about, and that's what he drew up for the second floor.
For the egress?
For the egress.
Okay, so he addressed what was the only thing that we had a problem with last time around?
Correct.
Okay. Is that okay, Mr. Madden?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else board-wise? Okay, I'm gonna go back to the public hearing. Anyone on Ms. Hanson?
Not at this time.
Gonna close this public hearing, then? I'll actually give the board one more shot. Any questions or comments? Okay. On the resolution for 8 to 10 East Main Street, total of eight residential apartments. Three on the second floor. Five combined apartments between the third floor and the fourth floor. You are in the DMU zone, so anything you plan on doing to the facade, any changes with the facade or signage, you'll need to go through the Architectural Review Board. And as always, we will waive parking because of also being in the DMU zone. It'll also be subject to the City of Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown and the State of New York if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Madden? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, next up on the agenda is T-Mobile. 358 to 360 Highland Avenue Extension. This is the installation of a diesel generator. And I'm also gonna add concrete pad. Yes, sir.
How are you?
Please state your name for the record.
Sure, Alex Weller with Affinity Engineering on behalf of T-Mobile.
Okay.
T-Mobile intends to install a diesel generator on a four-by-eight concrete pad, which is a standalone generator for backup power.
Okay.
We have mailings.
We have our mailings, Ms. Two? Okay. We're gonna open the public hearing. Anyone present in the public wishing to speak? Please step forward. Ms. Two, anyone on the telephone? Okay, I'm gonna ask online. Do we have anyone online?
We do have one person. We have a Renee Fisher, who has asked me to answer, ask a couple of questions on her behalf. She wants to know, is this at the Watertown on Highland Avenue Extension? There's no number. She's at 361 Ave Extension?
Yes.
Okay, and she has some noise concerns. How noisy will the generator be? When will it be running? Any air pollution issues? Is it only for emergency use? She has a noise issue from the garage garbage facility at 366. They are very loud from 2 a.m. to 5 a.m. So she just doesn't want the same problems.
Yes, this will be a standalone backup emergency generator.
Okay, yeah, actually, we have something that's written for the record. Similar question, so...
Perfect.
If Ms. Hanson has no one else online?
And one final question, is the diesel tank double walled?
Uh, yes, I believe so. That's part of code for generators, yeah.
That's the belly tank, right?
Yep.
And that concludes my... Will be, sorry. Will there be an alarm if it fails?
Yes, they are equipped with alarms.
Okay.
You can ask that question in a minute. Yeah. And also, we do have a written response from Lorraine A. Brennan, 38 Jamal Drive, Middletown, New York. Sirs, pertaining to the City of Middletown Planning Board meeting to take place on Wednesday, July the 7th, 2021, with regard to a special use permit application of Smart Link on behalf of T-Mobile. Whereas my condo is located directly behind the site, Highland Park Village. Of the application, please note the following concerns. The current available space is so that this new unit and storage tank would not have ominous visibility is limited. Where or how will this unit and storage tank be situated? Will this unit generator be used continually or only during power outages? What is the noise level capability of the unit? What is the duration of the units in process timing? Would it be hours or days? Does the unit have a testing mode? Or is it not in continual use? How often and what would be the duration? Who is responsible in case of a tank failure such as a fuel leak? Will the surrounding property owners be notified and by who? Please take these questions into consideration.
Sure, there's a few on there.
I'm pretty sure that they're all to be what the board's about to ask you, so...
Yeah, sure.
We'll start.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Do you want me to kind of answer them as I remember them?
Well, I'll tell you what, we can, we'll let the board members proceed also.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
With any questions? Who would like to go first? Anyone? Go ahead, Mr. Higby, you had a question, or?
I'm just curious, more than anything, but why are you choosing diesel? And there's natural gas in that area, isn't there? I mean, why would you want to have a tank? And why would you want to have, you know, and natural gas doesn't run out? And we have a power outage?
I honestly don't know the reason for T-Mobile's stance on that. This was kind of...
And I would think it would be quieter, too. I mean, I don't know. And obviously, a lot cleaner, it would burn a lot. I mean, it would run a lot cleaner as well.
Yeah, I could definitely look into the reason why they chose diesel over propane or natural gas. But, you know, it might have been an issue where they did not know that the natural gas hookups were, you know, readily available in the spot.
I believe they are. I don't know if anybody can confirm that, but... Yeah, they are with their natural gas, right? On Highland Avenue Extension?
Mr. Welch, do you know what the other generator is running?
At Kennedy?
Yeah, that's, I believe it's natural gas.
Well, that always is an option, too, to switch to a natural gas option if we need to.
I would think you would want to. I mean, then you don't have to worry about old fuel, 220 gallons of fuel sitting, because thankfully, we don't lose power often. And what is the, does it run once a week for half an hour or something? And I assume it is just for backup purposes, correct?
Correct, yes, there's basically a cycling time for it, which is approximately around that time, like an hour, like, I believe it's a week. And it is only for backup purposes when power outages.
And you can coordinate the times to run that, the test mode?
Yeah, absolutely. That's something that, you know, depending on what the City of Middleton, who I believe owns that water tank there, they can coordinate that with the T-Mobile technicians, yes.
I have a concern. So the plans that were submitted to us, there is no contact for T-Mobile. So you're here representing as an agent for them. So who is going to be the point person for this?
Well, actually, we would have Smart Link is the...
I'm here on behalf of Smart Link.
Yes.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, like, you've, you know, you supplied official documents and there's no contact information.
Contact, gotcha, yes.
Yeah, so...
I believe Tia and Smart Link has been in contact with the town thus far.
Okay.
And noise emissions, you would comply with the City of Middletown, whatever our code requires?
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
And is it a fully enclosed tank?
Yes, there is a full enclosure that could be around the tank as well, too.
What do you mean, a secondary containment?
Oh, no, just basically the enclosure that is, that's standard with the tank from the manufacturer.
There's no curbing, no nothing, so if this thing leaks, it goes onto our property?
That would be something where the T-Mobile technician would get a, you know, an alarm code. There would be something with the generator that would kind of trigger their alarm for them.
Okay.
And then we'd have to kind of act accordingly from there, yeah.
Okay, just so you know and the board knows, in this resolution, because we've been going through this probably over a year, and part of this, your resolution and your approval is gonna be based on, and contingent on, the Commissioner of Public Works review. Because the placement of the tank, even though you've given us a map, a drawing, he has the right to change that as not to interfere with the maintenance of the tank and anything that's in the tank that the city owns.
You're talking about the water tank?
Yes. And anything that's, anything else that's in there that happens to be the city's, you know, this location may or may not change per your plan.
Yeah.
Okay? He may request a curbing, some type of containment.
Sure.
Pardon me? A lagoon? Just so you know, because just personally, this has been a little difficult to get this where you are today.
Gotcha.
Okay? And we understand your concerns, but our concerns are also for the public and what happens
Absolutely.
for the city within that space. Do you have another comment, Mr. Welch? I'm sorry.
Can I make a recommendation?
Absolutely.
I know, I don't vote or anything like that, but why don't we look into the natural gas if they could...
Because I'm just thinking, like, do they have to have a bulk storage permit?
You can ask a question anyway, so...
Well, we can actually add that. It wasn't a concern.
Do you, I mean, at what point does anybody know, like, do they have to have a bulk storage permit? Does D E C have to come and inspect their... Like, I mean, at Mid-City, I mean, I have lots of tanks and...
Mr. Atkins is saying no.
No, not for 220. I know for 325 gallons, you have to, but I'm not sure about 220.
I can't speak to D E C regulations, but the fire code doesn't trip until about 1,000 gallons.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, we have a diesel generator at the firehouse, probably about the same thing that we use, and it runs right next to the gas line.
I have a 220-gallon fresh oil tank that I have to have in secondary, fresh oil, new oil, and I have to have it in a secondary containment, and it's a double-wall tank.
Right.
Yeah, quieter, cleaner?
Well, again, we can make the whole thing subject to further review. And the Commissioner of Public Works and you guys can sit down and hash that out. Okay?
Yep.
Is that okay, Mr. Higby?
Or we could just put it over for a month for the applicant to research?
And maybe they could have the location, right? The, we don't even know the location of the tank.
I don't, we don't know the location. It's just the commissioner wants the ability to be able to change it.
To move it once it's in?
No, 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 no. Prior to it goes in. He, that's what he asked me to do.
On the other tank, we've approved other generators, correct?
Correct.
And are they diesel or natural gas, or do you know?
Personally, do not remember, but there's one at Kennedy Terrace. And it's a very similar situation, whether it's gas or diesel, I cannot remember. But it's a similar situation. Pad, generator, sound attenuation panels on the generator. Same conditions, you know, you have to meet the City of Middletown ordinance. It's for emergency purposes only. The times that were set at Kennedy Terrace seem to work because we haven't had a complaint, and it's been there for quite a few years. And I can tell you that T-Mobile has agreed to adjust times. They've agreed to give us access to the generator. This generator doesn't need a key to get in. It has a combination code. need a key to get in. It has a combination code. So we'll get a contact person, we'll get codes and whatever, again, whatever the Commissioner of Public Works requires, they're gonna have to supply us.
But we can't require it to be natural gas?
I don't think we can, no. We can't, we, we can't require them to have a natural gas unit. Only thing that we will require is that if they decide to go with a diesel unit, if the Commissioner of Public Works considers or needs containment, curbing, or whatever, they'll have to do that. If our fire department looks at it and says, oh, you know, it, it's an issue as far as capacity of gallons, or it needs additional permits or whatever, they'll follow the codes. That's the only thing that we can do. We can't, we can only recommend.
Of course.
You'd like you to see gas, but obviously, you have the option. Anyone else? Public hearing's still open, so I'll go back to the public.
Did we address most of those questions?
Um, I think we did. I'll go over it once more time.
I could go over the list while you check, if you want to hand it to me.
This is, this is the one person's, then I think the one that was read over online was, is very similar to the one that I read to you.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. It was more about emergency generator, backup generator.
Yeah, backup.
Determined it's a backup generator. Coordinate times for testing mode, we will do that. How long will it run? That's the other, I was told it's only gonna be like a five, 10-minute runtime when it does test?
Yeah, yep, that's it.
Okay.
Once a week, you said, right?
I believe that's, that's the schedule for it.
Yeah. The engineer I spoke to over the phone, I don't know, I don't think it was you.
I don't believe that was me.
No.
He was on behalf of Smart Link, the construction manager.
Yeah. He, he said it might be two or three times a week. He wasn't certain.
Okay.
All week around the same schedule that your generator is in.
Right. We haven't been able to locate that schedule as of yet, so when that takes place, be fine.
How loud will it turn up when it's the test?
Well, the, on, on their previous submission, it was rated at 75 decibels at 23 feet. Okay? We also requested additional information. We didn't get that in the additional information, by the way. The brochure, we didn't get that. We got a simple spec sheet, and that's all that was on it, and no information about decibels or anything. But regardless of that, if they violate the noise ordinance, or they'll be subject to additional.
You're talking about like the residents around them.
No, so am I. Yeah. No, no, if it's noisier than it says it's going to be, then they have to add additional sound attenuation, whether they put trees or sound barriers, whatever it takes. Contact person, keys, DPW has final approval, Commissioner has final approval. Because this resolution, I read, is gonna be a little bit different than our normal resolution for cell towers. Okay? I think he, I think we addressed the questions.
We did.
Okay, all right. So in that case, I'm, I'll ask again. Ms. Hanson, anyone on the line?
Not at this time.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Go back to the board for any final comments or questions that you come up with. And I'm gonna try to read this resolution. Okay? Bear with me, we can always add to it. All right, resolution for the cell tower generator, Highland Avenue Extension. Said approval is subject to any additional comments and/or requirements that the City of Middletown Commissioner of Public Works may impose, but not limited to the final location of the generator concrete pad, as not to interfere with any DPW maintenance functions, and proper sound attenuation panels and/or sound barriers. Also, in addition to any approvals as required, disapproval subject to the terms and conditions of the existing lease. The generator testing periods will run at times as suggested by the DPW to avoid unnecessary interference with the neighbors and the DPW, Middletown Fire Department, given access to said generator either by key or access code. The landscaping, if any, will be done at the direction of the DPW. In addition, applicant will comply with the City Code Section 475-43.
Did you want to add also for the applicant to look into natural gas?
The applicant will also, at the request, recommendation of the planning board, look into the use of natural gas in lieu of diesel. And again, if anything is found, if you choose the diesel, if the Commissioner of Public Works finds anything, or the Middletown Fire Department finds anything that they need, you'll have to grant them whatever they want.
Of course.
Okay?
Including revised plans, right?
Well, if, if, if they move it, or if they, and if they change from diesel to gas, it'll be a set of plans that will meet that criteria. Is anybody think of anything else you want to make sure gets added to the resolution? Inspectors, are you kind of okay with that? Okay. And of course, they are subject to the Middletown DPW, Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and following the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, federal government, and the State of New York if applicable. All right. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, second. Mr. Higbee, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay?
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'll tell you a story when the meeting's over.
Martina, did you get the contact information for the second person? I'm sorry. Yeah, did you provide the contact information?
Yeah.
Martina, you have it?
Contact people.
Okay.
And it should be on the drawing in the front.
What's that?
Yeah, it's on the plan.
Contact people?
Yeah, the T-Mobile, you have them. The T-Mobile, uh, information's on there for Sylvan Way and Smart Link.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Have a good night, guys.
You, too.
You, too.
Next on the agenda is Frank Villano, 25 Myrtle Avenue and 91 Prospect Avenue, commercial space slash office and residential. This is a application that has come before us. We have a open public hearing on this application. So I'm going to ask, Martina, do we have anyone on the telephone? Any written comments? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone on the line that wishes to address this?
Not at this time.
Go to the board for any questions or comments on this.
Do we just need to make a motion for future?
No, we're gonna decline it.
Decline it, okay.
Well, there'll be a motion to decline.
There'll be a motion in a minute. We've already, actually, just, just for the record, we have already moved it on for further consideration.
I know we have.
And, and today, we're going to have a motion on 25 Myrtle Avenue, 91 Prospect Avenue.
There was some research done into this property, and it was found that there are two lots, but one address with a building on it that needs further determination.
So the request to use 25 Myrtle Avenue slash 91 Prospect as a commercial space slash office and residential mixed-use structure. Whereas, after investigation into the location and address, it has been determined that this property has two separate lots, which should have two separate addresses, as per the city assessor's office. That being said, this board cannot properly evaluate the application without this matter first being addressed. Therefore, the City of Middletown Planning Board declines the applicant's slash owner's request. I need a motion to decline. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Madden, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Last on the agenda is Frank Sienna, 108 to 110 Sprague Avenue, car detail shop and office. Again, this one has an open public hearing. Ms. Tu, have we had any additional phone calls, written? Okay, nothing. Ms. Hanson, anyone online for this application?
Not at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Go to the board for any questions or comments.
Just by background to the board, the applicant was to appear last month before the zoning board because their variances had expired as the use had not been used for over a year. They did not show up at the meeting. Martina, they did not contact her. There were no further submissions to Martina, and for those reasons, the motion, since this board had requested that they go to the Z B A, and they have not appeared before the Z B A at this time.
On the resolution, request to use 108 to 110 Sprague Avenue as a car detail shop and office space. Whereas, the non-conforming variances of property has expired, being that the property has remained vacant for over one year. And whereas, as the applicant slash property owner was referred to the City of Middletown zoning board to address the non-conforming status as a condition prior to acting on the pending application. And whereas, the applicant, applicant, excuse me, slash owner did not appear at a scheduled City of Middletown zoning board meeting, nor called to reschedule said hearing. And whereas, the planning board clerk has not had any response to inquiries on the applicant slash owner's intentions as to the submitted request. Therefore, the City of Middletown Planning Board has declined the applicant slash owner's request. I need a motion. Ms. Witt, second. I need Mr. Higbee. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And now, I need a motion to adjourn. Ms. Witt, Mr. Higbee, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.